Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the April 18th Forsyth County Board of Education to order. If everyone will rise, we'll have our invocation and pledge. If you'll bow. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. It's been a gorgeous day. Thank you for all that you've given us, Lord. Please be with those that have hearts and heavy hearts and give them the comfort that only you can. Lord, go with us tonight as we make decisions that concern our children and help us to always do the right thing. We ask this and all your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have before you an agenda that we need to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Tom move.
Motion by Tom and a second by Ann. All in favor? Unanimous. Now, we have recognitions and after all the recognitions are over, I will give a, say we'll take about a two-minute break and then if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to go, but if everybody will just kind of stay seated till we get through the spotlight, that would be great.
It's always a pleasure to be able to recognize staff and students and folks in our school system for their outstanding things that they do each and every day and we always have a lot of those, so we're very proud of that and this afternoon is no exception. We have several recognitions, so we will go ahead and begin with those. And our first recognition comes from Prudential, so I'd like to ask Mr. Fred Bazudo if he would come forward and give our first recognition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening and it's a great pleasure for me to be here today for a very special and important presentation. My company, Prudential Financial, in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, sponsors a nationwide award program to honor young Americans who care about their world and actively look for ways to improve it. We do this because we believe that if we are going to meet the many challenges we face today, we're all going to have to get more involved in making our communities and our planet a better place to live. And one of the most important things we can do in addition to being active volunteers ourselves is to stress the importance of community involvement to our children while they are young. Identifying and honoring young community service role models is a key part of this mission and that's what our award program is intended to do. Thousands of young people across the country were considered for Prudential Spirit of Communities Award this year from all of these two in each state and the District of Columbia have been selected for special recognition, one middle-level student and one high school student. Here in Georgia, I am delighted to report our top middle-level honoree is your own Kelsey Hirsch. Kelsey, will you please come forward? Kelsey has been singled out from all of the middle-level students in Georgia for an extraordinary achievement, not in academics, not in sports or the arts, but in service to her community. See, Kelsey, whoops, sorry. Kelsey is the daughter of two Penn State alumni and after hearing about the allegations of abuse around the Jerry Sandusky trial, Kelly wanted to make a difference and by helping the survivors. That's why Kelsey created Bands for Rain and to raise money and awareness for RAIN, which is Rape Abuse and Incest National Network. The more than $15,000 of money Kelsey has raised through her WISBAND fundraising project has helped RAIN keep up with the 47% of increased call volume to the Survivor Help Line. Kelsey has done a wonderful job in spreading the word of hope, courage, and strength and that she has and has a large following on Facebook as well as a local media presence on 11 Alive and soon a national spotlight on CNN. Kelsey wants to base her life on this project and make philanthropy your mission. So, Kelsey, we are very proud of you for making a difference in your world, one WISBAND at a time. So, Kelsey, your commitment and achievement represents the highest ideals of service to one's community. We are extremely proud of you and we salute you as a 2013 Prudential Spirit of Community State Honoree. And we want to welcome you to Washington DC at the beginning of May along with the other state honorees to take part in four days of special events so that we can further honor your accomplishments. There, you will receive a $1,000 award and be considered for one of 10 national awards. In addition, I would like to present you now with an engraved Presidential, I mean Prudential, this is hard to do with two, Spirit of Community Silver Medallion, signifying your accomplishment. So, here you go. And Kelsey, on behalf of everyone involved in the Prudential Spirit of Community Award, we want to congratulate you on a well-deserved honor. Thank you.
Congratulations and will Kelsey's parents, if you're standing, wave; if you're sitting, stand. There you are. Thank you so much. Our next award comes from the Future Business Leaders of America, the state competition winners. From, when I call your name, if you will, if you'll come down this side of the room and go across in this direction. From West Forsyth High School, our sponsor is Jamie Godby. And third place in economics was Kyle Jones. From Lambert High School, sponsor, Ms. Susan Fagan. I think I saw Susan somewhere. First place in Intro to Business is Mackenzie Morrissey. First place in Network Design is Tommy Clark. And first place in Network Design, Jake Williams. So, if all of you with some comments. Susan, you can come down, let's congratulate you. You make all this happen. Thank you so much. From North Forsyth, will this have, do we have parents, relatives, school folks here to support these people? Either wave at us, stand up, so we can say thank you. From North Forsyth High School, sponsor Shannon Anderson Rush is the sponsor. First class in American Enterprise Project, Andrew Hiltbrand. First place in American Enterprise Project, Amy Mealer. First place in management decision-making and second place in hospitality management, Ashton Savel. Third place in client services, Jesse Reed. Third place in business financial plan, Kyle Hickox. Third place in business financial plan, Corey Hickox. Congratulations. 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 Thank you so much. Now, father, parents, families, school folks here to support them, will you wave, stand up? Let's at least acknowledge you. Thank you so much. And again, congratulations to all of these FB LA state winners. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Gary Patz, Director of Transportation, to come forward to present our next award.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. We are here today to recognize a group of folks who helped us. You all know the school buses are a very glamorous career. And last year, we did a, we did some training at the elementary schools called 20 and 20 with Elvis, our safety owl, and we had a lot of good results with that and we go out and we engage our students on the campuses with school bus training. I'm sure I don't need that, but okay. The second piece was, we wanted to get our middle-schoolers involved and last year in November, Logan Wagner, President of the Victory Creek Middle School Technology Association, called us and he said, "We want to help. We want to help Elvis, the safety owl, and we want to help develop videos." And so, I'm here today and I appreciate the board giving us the opportunity to recognize these kids. They met with us all spring semester last year. They wrote scenarios, they wrote scripts, and then after school let out, they met with us on a Saturday and they filmed some safety videos that are now on our website and they're linked to your e-board and they're really well-done. And they're engaging, I'm sure the kids learned a lot from them and I think the kids around the county appreciate seeing school bus videos presented by their peers as opposed to just some big ugly transportation director. So, it turned out really wonderfully and we appreciate that. So, tonight, I do want to introduce, Kathy, come up here one second. Come on. Kathy Sykes works with, worked with this group. She helped them and steered them in the right direction in terms of the protocol of our school safety training, our school bus safety training, as she takes a lot of our training out to all the elementary schools and middle schools and preschools this time of year. All the kids will be kindergartners next fall and are in the preschools right now, are receiving school bus safety training right now for the fall. And so, Kathy has done that and I want to recognize her and I want her to help me present these. So, without further ado, Melissa Adams, come on up. And Samantha Saikuki. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. And those are the only two representatives this time of year. There's problems, there's marriages, there's, I think a couple of the kids are getting ready for the NFL draft, so, not the foot, I mean, they're doing the mock draft, anyway. They're representing the association, we appreciate that. Ms. Bridges, back there? Ms. Bridges is back there and she is the PTO President and Treasurer and we want to thank her as well and we want to thank all the parents who are here. Raise your hands and we'll recognize you as well. I do want to announce, we're going to keep it secret, the Reach Award this year is for, this month is for transportation, but our recipient is out sick. And so, we're going to do that in May at the May 16th meeting. And then I also want to take a moment to introduce, VCMS Technology Students gave us an idea, 20 and 20 was so successful for the, for the elementary schools, we're introducing a viral video competition for all middle-school students. And the topic is "At My Stop, You Stop," that's the national safety slogan for the National Association of Pupil Transportation this year. And so, we're inviting all middle-schoolers to produce a one-minute viral video, submit it, and if you are selected as the champion, you get to go on the transportation YouTube channel. Bailey will have to talk about sharing receipts with you or something, I'm not sure how that'll go. But we do want to announce that we, we hope that all middle schools will participate and submit at least one, or if you're just an individual, submit it. Thank you for your time. Thank you guys back there for helping us out, it was great, it was a great experience and thank you for listening.
Our next recognition comes from the National Restaurant Association. The National Restaurant Association Education Foundation honors a teacher with the Georgia Educator Excellence Award each year. This is equivalent to the Teacher of the Year for the State of Georgia, so it's a, it's a big deal. The foundation recognized and honored one of our very own, Ms. Dawn Martin, who is the culinary arts instructor at South Forsyth High School, so let's congratulate Ms. Martin and Ms. Jake Thomas. Thank you so much. And I know that Mr. Martin's here. You taught her how to cook everything, I'm sure, so. And South Forsyth High School Principal and other folks here to support Ms. Martin, wave at us, thank you so much. Celebrate Healthy North Georgia honored 21 organizations for their healthy initiatives. Our school system was recognized for having initiatives around concussion management, a heat-related injury prevention program, clinic nurses at all schools, and an outstanding school healthy eating program. At this time, we would like to congratulate the recipients of this award, Ms. Connie Trent, our lead school nurse, and Susan Atkins, Director of Student Support Services. And at this time, we'll ask Bailey Mitchell, Director of Technology, to come forward for our next recognition.
So, I'm pleased to share that Forsyth County Schools were recognized as part of the Ninth Annual School District, Digital School District Survey by the Center for Digital Education and the National School Boards Association. This survey showcases exemplary school boards and districts' use of technology to govern the district, communicate with students, parents, and the community, and to improve district operations. Over the past nine years, we've applied five times and we placed five times in the top 10. In 2005, we were first place in the, in the nation. 2008, third place. 2009, third place. And 2004, sixth place. So, we're very pleased that in 2012, we were able to round out the top three with second place. The line chair of the credit goes to our own Tim Clark, our Coordinator of Instructional Technology, Jill Hobson, who's our Director of Instructional Technology, Valerie Hall, and Jennifer Correttilo for taking the time and energy to highlight our district, collect all the information necessary for the application, and to actually submit to the competition. So, it's a, it's a widely-recognized award and we're just very pleased that we're able to place yet again, one more time. So, this time, I'd like to call Tim Clark forward.
We have one final recognition this afternoon, very important recognition. Our Superior Performance Spotlight this evening will be presented by Sarah Cale. Sarah is South Forsyth High School student and is also Forsyth County's Oratorical Contest winner. So, if, Sarah, would you come forward and present?
Why my voice is important? A young woman sits alone in the silence of her house. She holds her head in her hands, strokes her face, and thinks of ways to end this suffering. A baby's cry echoes from down the hall. Exhausted from a sleepless night, the woman lays down on her side with no interest in calming the screaming child. As the screams fade, a lone phone call startles the woman. With a heavy sigh, she lifts the phone from the receiver and answers the call. A cheerful voice on the other end snaps her out of her fall. This woman was suffering from postpartum depression. My family and I moved into the house across the street from her when I was three years old. Wanting to make friends, my mom began calling this woman often to just have a conversation with her. My mom had no idea what suffering this woman was experiencing. After a year or so, she and my mom became close friends and she told my mom that those phone calls had pulled her from one of the darkest times of her life. My mom's voice had been her candle in the dark when all seemed lost. The power of a human voice is incredible. Just one single voice has the capability of making a difference in this world. My voice is important because I can use it to encourage, influence, and inspire. First, I can use my voice to encourage. My mom showed me the power of encouragement when she unknowingly brought her friend out of a depressed state. You know, our voices are what distinguish us from all other mammals. As humans, we have the capability to speak, understand, and in turn, feel for one another. Words, however, connect us to one another. Every day, I see teens who struggle with the pressure to be perfect. They seem depressed and unhappy with the way that they look. I can identify with them because I too used to not love the way that I looked. In middle school, I would constantly get remarks such as, "Look at that twig, I bet she's anorexic," or, "Don't breathe too hard, she might fall over." Truth is, I wasn't anorexic, nor was I ever. But one day, one of my friends said to me, "Hey, you look really pretty today. You should have seen the big old smile on my face." There's an old proverb that says, "If you see a friend without a smile, give him one of yours." I experienced how just one compliment can turn someone's whole day around. As I learned to rise above the downgrading remarks of my peers, I realized that using my voice to talk to other teens could help encourage those who were going through what I had experienced. Secondly, I can use my voice to influence. Growing up as a Christian, I was always told that reaching out to others and talking to them about their faith could be the perfect opportunity to share God's love. When I was struggling with the comments from kids at school, I had friends that would come to me and assure me that no matter what, God would always love me. An unknown author once said, "Sometimes, God has to break us to make us." We're all like glow sticks. No matter how much we're bent and broken, our light still shines. My friends tell me to build a stronger relationship with God. I can use my voice to influence my peers in finding their faith, just as I found mine. Lastly, my voice can inspire. When I grow up, I want to be a motivational speaker. I want to speak to teens about their self-image and share my life experiences with them. As a motivational speaker, I can use my voice to provide teens with the tools that they need to help them embrace the same imperfections I saw in myself. Mahatma Gandhi once said, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." By sharing my experiences and setting an example, I wish to make a greater impact on someone else's life. My voice is important because I can use it to encourage others to be proud of the way that they look, influence others to seek faith in God, and inspire others to love themselves. I can use my voice to help make a difference wherever I go. And who knows? Maybe one day, I could have the opportunity to be that cheerful voice on the other end of the line.
We would love for everybody to stay for the business portion of our meeting if you want to, but we're going to take a couple minutes break and if you would like to leave and go back to your evening, you're welcome to do that now. Thank you.
I was trying real hard. Pastor said, "Bye." I'm trying to use my meditation techniques to try to break down.
I know, me too. I kind of, it's like, okay.
Yep.
It counts.
So emotional. Yes.
Every little thing.
Every little thing. All right, Belle, I need your redneck.
Nothing you can do.
Got the glass.
How are you feeling? Congratulations, Belle, that really is cool. That's awesome.
Is this mine?
Yeah.
Funny.
Right. And the thing is.
So, who was number one? You know, who was number one?
Virginia.
Somebody that's paying all the dues to, we don't put the new technology anymore. We don't put the dues.
Hey, the dues, we're not paying.
We weren't getting anything out of it. Pam's wife is still there.
So, the problem is like, we hit them.
All right.
But if you get to number one, then it's going to be like, hard, you know.
You got to do the dues.
Exactly.
It's a little clever.
It's got to be.
Number one, I know.
Last week, we came across.
Yeah, I figured that, but still.
I think we're prepared.
Yeah.
You know what, we still.
Michael's gonna join us.
He's the one that wanted him.
Okay.
We had him scheduled before everybody even got to the meeting.
People don't know how long it's going to last.
Then it was limited, it was like, hey, we're going to take six speakers.
I think this is a better, it's like, honestly, I like, I'm like, you know, they had to pick my daughter.
We said they needed at least two of the good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of good things going on in this organization.
We decided, we figured that's worth it.
Yep, I agree.
Change.
She might have to, you know, gavel so they don't finish leaving.
She gets chit-chat.
You have to do the gavel for them to leave, I'm sure.
Is that going to stand back here and talk to the teachers for a minute?
Okay, if I can call the meeting back to order, we will proceed. Next on our agenda, we have public participation and we have several, I think seven or eight that's going to speak tonight. I think most everybody's speaking on the same thing, so we're going to give you three minutes. We'd like to ask, and we won't respond to each person, maybe at the end, but I'd like to ask that everybody not, not repeat theirselves. I mean, you know, if you have new points or whatever, that'll be great, but if, if everybody stands up and says the same thing, it'll take longer. So, if you could just not repeat yourself and...
Yeah. Go ahead and take care of the consent agenda next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We'll go ahead and do it pretty quick. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Now, I'm going to read the rules of the public participation. To guarantee an orderly meeting and ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak during public participation, the board has the following procedures. The board may limit the time allocated for public participation as well as the length of individual comments at their discretion. Where appropriate, the public is urged to follow the school system's issues resolution process before presenting issues or concerns to the board through public participation. Only Forsyth County residents, representatives of businesses or organizations, or school system employees may address the board during public participation. No individual or group will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking during public participation. The board requests that multiple speakers from a group or organization appoint a single representative to address the board. All speakers shall address the board by first stating their names. All remarks shall be made to the board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual board members. Speakers may bring printed material and other supporting materials. These materials should be given to the clerk of the board. Personnel issues involving individual employees, issues involving individual students, and pending litigation are not subjects for public participation. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil. Profane, rude remarks and personal attacks will not be allowed. The board will not respond to comments made by the speaker during public participation unless they choose to ask questions. Speakers should remain at the microphone while answering questions. Okay, and our first participant that signed up is Susie Hale. Is she here? You do. You're still everybody's thunder. Where appropriate, the public is urged to follow the school system's issues resolution process before presenting issues or concerns to the board through public participation. Only for South County residents, representatives of businesses or organizations or school system employees may address the board during public participation. No individual or group will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking during public participation. The board requests that multiple speakers from a group or organization appoint a single representative to address the board. All speakers shall address the board by first stating their names. All remarks shall be made to the board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual board members. Speakers may bring printed material and other supporting materials. These materials should be given to the clerk of the board. Personnel issues involving individual employees, issues involving individual students, and pending litigation are not subjects for public participation. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil. Profane, rude remarks and personal attacks will not be allowed. The board will not respond to comments made by the speaker during public participation unless they choose to ask questions. Speakers should remain at the microphone while answering questions. Okay, and our first participant that signed up is Susie Hale. Is she here? You do. You're still everybody's thunder.
Where do I go? See, I was all relaxed. I figured I'd laugh. Got a few notes right here. Do I use this speaker? Right here? I'm Susie Hale. I come here tonight as a very concerned parent. I have a 10-year-old son at Midway Elementary. I have twin sons at South Forsyth High School. I also come here tonight as a very concerned former educator. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in early childhood education from the University of Georgia. So education, I'm very passionate about. Right now, Midway Elementary is not 13 students over capacity. It's not even 51 or 193 students over capacity, like some of the schools in the area. But it is 332 students over capacity. No other elementary school in the area has this much overcrowding. What my education degree and my teaching experience taught me is that overcrowding in a school is immobilizing. It is frustrating. It's confusing. It's distracting, and it's chaotic. Traits hardly conducive to an effective learning or teaching environment. Children need room to learn. Teachers need room to teach. Our job as parents and educators is to create an environment that is physically and mentally conducive to learning and teaching, our most important resource, which is our children. Our children's and teachers' safety is at stake because we will have 11 trailers in the back of our permanent buildings at Midway. Our children's quality of life at Midway Elementary is at stake. Our children's learning and education is at stake. Please reconsider what you're doing to our school, to Midway Elementary School. We're here to speak out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Melissa Krhovak.
My name is Melissa Krhovak, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I would like to take a few minutes of your time to express my concern over the student enrollment projections for Midway Elementary. I would like to present my concerns from two perspectives. The first, a volunteer and a volunteer coordinator at Midway. And second, from my children's perspective at Midway. Please let me first give you some background on myself. From 2006 to 2013, I have served on the following committees. Two years on Midway Executive PTA Board, two years Forsyth County PTA Board, one year Title I Parent Advisory Committee, two years Midway LSC member, two years Vicory Creek LSC member, one year as the Vicory Creek Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, four years as Midway Elementary Watchdog Coordinator. My son James attended Midway from 2006 to 2011, and my son Andrew attended Midway from 2006 to 2012, and I currently have a fourth grader at Midway. As you can see, based on my experience over the past nine years, I am familiar with Midway as well as Forsyth County School. I know how important parent feedback is to you as a board, and I know you will take action based on our concerns, which is why I'm here tonight. I feel that Midway has some of the most highly qualified teachers and most highly qualified staff in Forsyth County. Over the past few years, we have patiently watched as our school increased in numbers well above our capacity. Our county as a whole has experienced growing pains, and if anyone is up for the task, it has been Midway. Midway is a very special place. We always say it's like Mayberry, a small school with a hometown feel. But no matter how great our teachers and staff are, we have come to a point where our increased student capacity is affecting the climate of our school as well as the quality of our learning for our students. As a volunteer coordinator of a volunteer force of over 100 dads, I have seen a huge change in the past few years. In 2009, the Midway Watchdog Dad Program started. This program allows dads to take a day off work and volunteer in our school. This year alone, our dads have put in over 600 volunteer hours. 600 volunteer hours this year alone. These dads serving carpool line, three classrooms, and lunch and recess. They're not just walking around the building or helping with school building projects. They are in the classrooms. Lack of parent involvement is not an issue at Midway. I have also helped in carpool line, served in my students' classroom, and experienced the lunchroom. In the past few years, these environments have changed dramatically. The carpool line has become unsafe with kids being dropped off in the bus line in places where there's not appropriate sidewalks, or parents are trying to walk their students into school during drop-off times. We have up to five dads serving in carpool line most Fridays, and it's still not enough to keep our kids safe. Our classroom environments no longer provide the highest standard of learning in which our county can provide. One of our proudest moments was in 2010 when Dr. Buster Evans served as a Midway Watchdog. He graciously took time out of his busy schedule to serve in carpool line, three classrooms, and hang out with our students during lunch. We appreciated it so much. One of his experiences in 2010 was to help our kids in our science lab. It was a classroom with two sinks, desks with proper equipment, and many tanks filled with various critters. A wonderful learning environment. Our science lab is now in a trailer. How can you teach science in a trailer with no sink? This is just one of the many situations that are affecting our students' learning experience. From my students' perspective, things are much different for my fourth grader compared to my other two graduates. Midway is a community. We are family. Some of the programs that brought us together as a community are no longer available because of our capacity. My other two students were able to participate in Book Buddy programs and Principal Pals, and these programs are no longer available for my fourth grader. Tonight, you will hear a lot about numbers of students, square footage, trailers, and so on. And I know Book Buddies and Principal Pals and science labs may seem trivial to you, but I want you to understand and hear from me that these programs and environments that make Midway a family and a community are being taken away. Our climate has changed. Many of my neighbors in Hampton Forest are considering homeschool or private school next year because of the situation at Midway. This is one of the best school systems in the state. No Forsyth resident should want to seek alternative ways to educate their child. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashok. Ashok. I'm a Dicetti?
Yes.
Close enough?
My name is Ashok Imari Seti. Thanks for giving me to speak in front of the board. I have the same concern. I have nothing more to add. So I will wait to hear from the board as to what your plans are to address the concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Alice Fox.
Can't remember if I have to follow the oratorical champion of the county, but I just...
It was a tough act.
I'm just going to read because she did excellent. So we should all aspire to that.
Your voice can make a difference.
Yes.
That's what she said.
Influence and inspire. Influence and inspire. Hello, my name is Alice Fox. I have been a room mom, served on the PTA Board for three years. I'm currently the president of the Midway Elementary PTA. I serve on the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council. I'm a substitute teacher. But most importantly, I'm the proud and concerned mother of a sixth grader at Piney Grove Middle School and a third grader at Midway Elementary. Needless to say, I've been a very involved parent at Midway. First, I want to say thank you to Kristen for taking the time to personally meet with me and listen to our concerns. I really appreciate that. I also want to say thank you to Ann and Nancy and Kristen for coming out and meeting with us and touring the school. We really appreciate your time. I even understand, Dr. Evans, you came by on Tuesday, so thank you. We really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen, go through our school, tour, and see firsthand our concerns. For me, this overcrowding issue, and I hate to even call it overcrowding because to me, the overcrowding is the result of a bigger issue, which is more of an equity issue. What I mean, what is being done for one school isn't necessarily being done across the board for another school. So this did not start with, for me, when the Forsyth County paper put it on the front page of the paper in the wintertime. That did not start for me. I have long been a proponent of Midway Elementary School, and even when I receive looks of uncomfortable embarrassment when I'm asked what school my sons attend, that to me is the issue. I'll give you some examples. Last February, Midway was selected as one of the elementary schools to be evaluated by the Southern Association for Colleges and Schools, who y'all know as SACS. I was asked along with a few other parents that are actually in this room to be on that parent committee, to be interviewed. We all could not say enough complimentary things about Todd Smith, our principal, all the administration, teachers, and staff. We all shared stories of the individualized attention that our children received, whether they be Hispanic, whether they have special needs, or whether they were in horizons. But the one area that we all kept coming back to was the feeling of the lack of support or assistance, or I can't really put my word on it, of something to help us be more successful or more importantly, to prove to the community that we are indeed a successful school. There was a real estate agent actually in this group, and several others shared similar stories. And he had said that when he tries to sell a house, if it's in a neighborhood, people love everything about it. But when they say, "What school did we go to?" And they say, "Midway," they go, "Oh, I've heard about that school." That's unacceptable and so not true. We all, and you can see how many people love Midway Elementary, so that's absolutely not true. The SACS committee actually said that they would definitely note our feedback and report that to the Forsyth County Administration. So I thought, great. Now, we've been heard, that's great. But then this fall, as a PTA president, I was walking the school property with Mr. Smith and a Forsyth County employee about the PTA purchasing a shade structure for our playground. The employee told me that he really didn't know about putting a permanent structure on that playground because there were going to be about three or four more trailers that were coming to our school. I started in with, "Wait, no, no, we have 11. We have 11 trailers. Why are you doing that?" Because I said, "They don't have trailers, they don't..." And I was, and he said to me, and I said, "I thought Kelly Mill." And I had all kinds of solutions. But his words to me, and I quote, "Oh, no, no, no. You don't ever mess with the polo fields." So I started to do some research. And I realized that not only is Midway 370 students over current capacity, but the Forsyth County strategic plan is for us to be 480 students over capacity in five years. I realized, I've got friends all over, I'm very involved. I know that every school says we have overcrowding issues, but they are nowhere near the numbers that Midway that we have. Obviously, and also, the plans for elementary school number 14 that would relieve Midway are not a factor at this point. I know several parents tonight are going to talk about numbers and some more detail, so I will not take up my time with that. But for example, Sharon Elementary has approximately 1,470,000 square feet of building space. Midway Elementary has 72,000 square feet of building space. But we have five less stu... Sharon Elementary has five less students than we do. That's twice the space, and they have five less students than we do in a building that's 72,000 square feet. I will close with this situation as a person who actually works in this environment. As I mentioned, I'm a frequent substitute teacher at Midway Elementary. Many times, I substitute for the special education teachers that are there. Since there are two teachers that are in this trailer, sometimes we pull students out, sometimes we go into the classroom, both ways. But for this certain group, we actually go into the school building. There is a group of nine students that I instruct who mostly have focus issues as their special need, and they do better in a smaller group situation. Because of the lack of options of available rooms, I have to take them to the teacher's lounge, which let me set the scene for you. There are two bathrooms, a copy machine, a vending machine, a Coke machine, a microwave, and a refrigerator. So I'm teaching children who have focus issues. When there's teachers coming in to go to the bathroom, getting a Coke, getting their microwave and their lunch, they can't fo... I can't focus. How are they going to focus? So then, I hear that two miles down the road, a school from us has one empty classroom that is used only for book storage and one empty classroom that's used for the teachers to have lunch. That's very disheartening, very disheartening to me. And I don't think we're really serving those students. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Emily O'Leary. And I just want to remind you, it's three minutes. That's okay. I gave you his time. He didn't speak.
All right, I'll cut mine down a little bit then. My name is Emily O'Leary, and I too am coming as a concerned parent as well as a representative for the Oakside at Hamby neighborhood of all of us families who have kids who are at Midway Elementary. I was going to talk about numbers. They've already done that for me. So I'm going to skip straight to my main concern. I understand that we are getting three or four more trailers next year in addition to the 11, the 11 that we already have. My main concern is the safety for those kids and those teachers in those trailers. As you might recall, just a month or so ago, we had tornado warnings during the school hours. Our students had to go into the hallways and do their drills. My question to the board is, what happens to those 100 students, which would be fourth graders who are going into those trailers next year? What happens to those students who will have to go through the severe weather to get to those trailers, to come into the school for safety? Where is their safe place? Everybody deserves a safe place. They should not have to come across the rain and the snow or the ice just to be safe. We are already two and three kids deep whenever they're doing their severe weather alerts and drills at the school. And there are only so many interior walls. Where is their safe place? Where are those kids out in that trailer? Where is their safe space? And then another thought I had is about the fourth graders going into those trailers next year. What if they need to use a restroom? Is the board going to approve additional funding for children, for teachers, or assistants to come in to walk those kids to the bathroom? And keep in mind, that path from those trailers to the school are not protected. They're walking in the environment, whether it's rain, snow, cold. Is the board going to approve funding for some kind of protective covering to keep those kids sheltered and safe? Another very important question that I have to ask, especially in light of Newtown, is if Midway was to lock down because of a security threat, how do you lock down those trailers? How do you maintain the safety of those teachers and those kids in those buildings? If you think that a shooting or any type of other violent action won't happen in Forsyth County, I'm sure the parents of Newtown thought the same thing. I want to know what you're going to do to keep our kids and our teachers and our administration safe. They have already touched on some, so I'm skipping. The other concern I had is the buses. With the sheer number of kids that we have, we of course have some buses that are busing our kids to school that are at capacity. What are you doing to make sure our kids are safe? That's not a safe environment either. Again, as someone mentioned, not even a mile down the road, and I'll call it out, it's Vicory Creek. They have an empty classrooms. They're about to lay off six teachers because of under enrollment. Yet, we're over 300 kids overpopulating our school. How does that happen? It is not acceptable to me, to my neighbors. We care about our kids. We love this county. We love our school. And we want to see something that is constructively done. Not a Band-Aid, not trailers. We need something done. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Dana Jennings.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not quite as experienced as the people who have gone before me. I have one daughter in first grade, and my second one begins kindergarten next year at Midway. I have to tell you that from the moment I stepped into Midway, I have never felt a sense of peace and confidence that I knew my children would be taken care of. I am always welcome in my child's classroom, and the teachers and staff have been wonderful, caring... caring, and inspiring. What more could a parent ask for? Well, I'm here to ask the Board of Education to please rectify the overcrowding at Midway. There are two reasons I believe it is critical that this change be made in the next school year. First, safety. And my points are exactly what was spoken before me, no difference. Safety, safety, safety. We send our children to school knowing that they're going to be safe, and the feeling of overcrowding does not create a safe environment. I would like for you all to ask yourself this question. Do you believe that an overcrowded elementary school with children from the ages of five to 10 is the safest environment for a child during an emergency situation that would require all students to be evacuated? Secondly, the education of our children is in jeopardy when classrooms are overcrowded. Studies have shown that the teacher-to-student ratio directly affects a student's academic scores, as well as the teacher turnover rate. A study done by researchers at Berkeley University for the Los Angeles Unified School District found the following to be factual, and I quote, "Achievement gains were most robust for elementary students who escaped severe overcrowding. Relative to the rate of learning for the average student, the subset of students enjoyed achievement gains equivalent to about 65 days of additional instruction per year." Now, as a side note, the amount of reduction in school population was anywhere from 37% to 61%. Midway is currently 42% over capacity. Can you imagine what kind of achievement gains our children at Midway could incur if the school was not overcrowded? I understand that redistricting is a complicated jigsaw puzzle, with bus routes, subdivisions, feeder patterns, capacity, et cetera, but again, Midway is 42% over capacity, with no other elementary school in the county coming near this number, in addition to the actual square footage at Midway being half of that of the immediate surrounding elementary schools such as Shiloh Point, Kelly Mill, Sharon, and Vickery. As Forsyth County leaders for quality and education, please help our children at Midway receive the safest and best education possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And last, we have Paul Lawler. Paul Lawler?
Good evening. My name is Paul Lawler, I live at 540 Montgomery Avenue, and I'm a Midway watchdog and a father of three students, two of which are at Midway, and the third will be there next year. First, I have to thank everybody that's come before me, because I think they've said a lot of what needed to be said in order to bring to light what we, the concerns that we have as parents at Midway. My time here, I think, is basically to kind of continue that narrative, but also invite you all to continue the dialogue or open the dialogue, so that we can come and find solutions together to the problem that we perceive of overcrowding at Midway Elementary. I'm speaking tonight specifically on behalf of the watchdogs. Melissa is an awesome coordinator for that team, and I know the dads and myself, we get a lot out of that program. But the great thing about watchdogs, in addition to spending time with the students, is it gives us the opportunity to really get inside the school, inside the classrooms, and see the great work that staff, students, and the various stakeholders, I know we have some business stakeholders here from the Midway community tonight, but also see some of the problems and some of the concern, and illustrate some of the concerns that we have as parents and stakeholders in this community. We've heard about the safety issues that we feel are there as a result of the number of students in a smaller school, so I won't spend too much time on that. One of the main concerns that I have is the facilities, and are the facility solutions that are either being discussed or planned for, are they able to provide an equitable opportunity for the students at Midway Elementary, the same as other students in the county would have? And I think that echoes some concerns of many of the parents in this room tonight. They're really all about opportunity and equity for the students at Midway Elementary. One of the things that we've been discussing is, you know, the capacity for technology. I've looked at the SACS report, and one of the commendations has been the county's technology plan and the strategic plan around technology. Can the approach to portables, the approach to the trailers that we have right now, support that strategic plan effectively? And if not, what can we do about it? And I think that's really where a lot of this dialogue needs to go, is how do we make sure that there's an equitable distribution of the resources that the county has available to it? The other thing is, this is a problem that's not going to go away. Midway is 30%, with the addition of the portables next year, it'll be 30% portable in terms of classrooms. So 30% of that school will be based on trailers. I'm not sure of the other numbers in other schools, but I know that there has been a lot of building in those other facilities where they don't have that level of numbers. But the other thing that I want to point out is that Midway is iconic of the phenomenal growth that the county has enjoyed over the past few years, to the point that we've been double and triple the countywide growth rate since at least 2009. So that's an important factor to consider. I know another thing that some of the watchdogs have mentioned, and this is something that I've experienced a few times, it's pretty crazy, but it's a lot of fun, the logistics of the lunch hour.
Lunch hours.
Well, and that's a major concern, right? Because we know how important good nutrition is to learning and to our students, to our children, and the number of students, in order to make lunch even work at Midway, with the numbers that the county is projecting, we're looking at lunch hours starting before 10 o'clock in the morning. And as somebody who's worked that lunchroom, man, I'm telling you, it's going to be a significant challenge, and one that needs to be rectified. I don't want to take up a tremendous amount of time, because I think a lot of what I'm saying is echoing what's already been said, or has been information that you've already heard. However, I do want to reiterate and continue the narrative that the Midway community is one that is growing, we support its growth, more importantly, it's inclusive, and everybody in this room supports that inclusiveness. That's one of the things that I've loved about Midway. We've been in this area for the past two years, we moved up from City of Atlanta, and it was amazing to me to find this kind of community that Midway has developed, and we love it there. However, I think what I want to say is that we all have to share in the responsibility of providing the opportunities and the equity to the students at Midway, as well as the entire district. And what we're really after is to make sure that we all share in that responsibility, not only just us as parents, business stakeholders, and educators, and of course, you folks on the board, because we can't do this without you, obviously. Midway students are iconic of the growth of the community, they're iconic of what's great about Forsyth County, and what attracts people to come live here and educate here and send our students to your schools. I think they deserve, and I know that they will get, with your cooperation and our help, the education and the quality education that should be coming to them. So I appreciate your time tonight, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Usually, we don't address public participation, but I would like to say that I so appreciate all of you being here, because it does my heart good to know that you care as much as you do about your children and your schools. And, you know, I know Midway's not one of the newer schools. I grew up in Forsyth County, I've been here all my life, and Midway was there when I was incoming elementary, and it does my heart so good to see people that are still so passionate about it. And I want to thank all of you for being here, and I do want to tell you that our central office has been working very closely with the principal and your administrator on some solutions. I don't know if y'all all realize this, but we, the projections, the numbers that you have right now are actually, and the guy that does the numbers for us, the projections, is really, really good. I mean, he is so close, except for Midway. And y'all, right now, have the number of students that I believe they were supposed to have in 2016. And so it kind of happened before, I mean, it just exploded. And it was not in the plan that it was going to explode like that. So our people here are working with your administrators weekly to try for these different issues, for some of the short terms. Redistricting will be considered, that's one of the short-term relief things that we could do, because like several of you pointed out, there's seats in other schools. The long term, I will tell you that we have made application to the state for the new school.
Will make.
We're in the process, right? It hadn't been filed yet, but we're in the process of filling it out, I think we discussed that last month. We are going to go ahead and make an application. I'm not sure how we're going to pay for it, because there's not, if y'all want to stay around and hear the finance report, you can see that, but we do hear you-
There's a bucket at the door.
Yeah. We hear you, and we know that there's a lot of challenges there, and we appreciate your concern, and we are trying to find some solutions, and we, like I say, are going to try to move forward with the school, I believe it's on McFarland?
McFarland and Martin Ray.
And so we are going to, you know, go, try to go ahead and make application with the state and get that done. And so we really appreciate all of you coming, and thank you very much for your participation. Okay. Okay, next on our agenda, we have presentation and discussion items, I believe, and first we have the INSPIRE presentations, and that is Dawn Phelps and Mitch Young, led by Joey Perkel.
Good afternoon. As all of you are aware, the INSPIRE program is designed to further develop assistant principals in the areas of school improvement and instructional leadership, and these are folks who are currently assistant principals. One of the requirements is they have to be an assistant principal with us for a minimum of two years, and these also are folks who are aspiring to become principals in the near future. This program has been very beneficial, I believe, in that we have had several principals to come from this group in the past, and so we're very proud of that. But this year, we've had four of our very own assistant principals participating in the INSPIRE program, and so tonight, I would like for you to hear from two of them, and we were going to have Dawn Phelps, who's the assistant principal at North Forsyth High School, and Mitch Young, who's the assistant principal at Lambert High School. And we will have Dawn to come and present first, and then Mitch will follow immediately after Dawn's presentation.
Thank you.
Won't take the Exodus personally.
Really wish I would stay and see what great work you all do.
Okay. I think it timed out.
It's just us now.
Let me re-log in. I think it timed out. It says this thing. Yeah, I'm going to have to re-log in. Is this an Explorer box right here? There we go. Good evening. Over the past several years, educators have been hearing a lot about getting our students college and career-ready. Being college and career-ready means that our students are graduating from high school with the knowledge in math and English language arts to a level that it's necessary for them to qualify for and be successful in entry-level employment and/or entry-level credit-bearing college courses. However, nationally, four out of 10 of our students have to take some form of remedial classes. So as we look to college and career readiness standards and assessments, we as educators are looking at a few things. One, we're looking at raising our standards for our students in English language arts in the area of reading and writing, developing better assessments aligned to college and career readiness standards, and implementing education with improved professional development and evidence-based instruction models and support. So all of that brings me this evening to my INSPIRE project that centers predominantly on high school literacy to help support those college and career readiness standards. Before I was an administrator at North Forsyth High School, I was an English language arts teacher. Literacy was what I taught, my focus each and every day. However, the English classroom that I left five years ago is much different than the English language arts classroom I see now. For example, the literature. The focus when I was an English teacher was on fiction writing, but as we transitioned to Common Core, we're seeing that we're asking our students to read more informational text, and we're asking them to do more cold reads. In writing, I asked most of my, when I had my students write, most of their writing was in narrative format, but today, we're seeing a shift for them to write where they're having to explain processes, or where they're having to persuade and provide evidence to support their claims. And that leads us to Common Core, which is truly the game changer. Literacy is not a job for just the English language arts teacher anymore, it is a job for everyone. And we see that as we look at the Common Core, specifically in the areas of literacy, because there are Common Core literacy standards in social studies, science, and career tech classes as well. This sometimes makes teachers, those non-English teachers, a little scared, because you hear things like, "I'm not an English teacher." "I can't teach English, I'm not an English teacher." "I don't know what a conjunctive adverb is." "How can I teach literacy?" Well, literacy is not about dying grammaring sentences, and it's not about identifying parts of speech, it's about using the curriculum that they already have, but using those literacy standards as a vehicle to teach their specific content. So my goal as an administrator with the INSPIRE project was to assist a department that I supervise in our building, which is one of the departments I supervise, is the social studies department. And so I've been assisting those teachers this past year in incorporating literacy standards. So using my background as an English language arts teacher, I spent this last year creating staff development opportunities to assist those social studies teachers bridging those skills, not to make them English teachers, but social studies teachers that use writing and reading as a vehicle to express their curriculum. If I can use the metaphor, that teachers are very much like artists, and they're creating a piece of artwork, and that artwork is knowledge of curriculum for students. So we have great teachers, great artists, if you will, and they have a variety of colors on their palette. My job with the INSPIRE project was simply to add more colors and tones and textures to what they were already doing. And those textures and tones were areas of literacy, focused on reading informational text, developing text-based questions, increasing writing activities for the students, and in those writings, asking those students to provide evidence and supporting details when they write. Those colors, tones, and techniques are those elements of literacy, enhancing the curriculum they already have. At North Forsyth High School, collaboration is very important to us, and one of my jobs at North Forsyth High School is I create the master schedule for teachers and students. So this previous year, when we designed our master schedule, we made it a priority that all of our core teachers, our English, math, science, and social studies teachers, had common planning time embedded in their day. So I use that with the INSPIRE project. So over the course of the year, I have been joining the social studies department when they've had their common planning time, and joined their departmental meetings, and also when they've had breakout sessions in specific content in world history, US history, government, and econ, I've joined those meetings as well. And each time I would join their meeting, what I would do is I would bring to the table some literacy- um, some literacy strategy or technique that could potentially translate into their specific content area. To get a wider scope, and so they weren't always listening to me, I would also solicit the help of other social studies teachers that were already doing great things incorporating literacy things. And so I would have them come as well to share out things that they were doing that was successful. Um, we have developed a writing rubric that is specific, um, to non-English classes. And, um, we have even looked collectively as a social studies group at their students' writings, using that rubric and talking about how would we, we would score using that. So basically, we're taking something that could be a little bit uncomfortable for them as far as scoring a writing assignment. Um, and we have, in essence, normed our expectations for, for, for grading those. These sessions provided great opportunities for collaboration, as well as showed each teacher how they could address those literacy standards without that fear, "I'm not an English teacher." Um, the reading and writing became tools in which they use to just teach and support their already-rich social studies curriculum. The other thing that the social studies, uh, department at North Forsyth High School had been doing, uh, before I joined their department was that they have created some really wonderful common unit exams. And so what I did is, is I worked collaboratively, collaboratively with them as well to tweak some of those unit tests so that they were incorporating a higher level of literacy and they were modeling some of their questions in a literacy format. Now, modern-day teachers, not few years ago when I first started in education, but now we're becoming very comfortable with data analysis. We frequently talk about how we're monitoring our progress, how we're monitoring our students' progress. So in the literacy project, we created a pre-test and a post-test to monitor their progress. So we gave this pre-test and post-test to all North Forsyth High School social studies students. And some of those questions on the, the pre-test and the post-test simply required students to have a multiple-choice response. But some of the questions required them to have written responses where, again, they had to take support and argument from that cold read to support an argument. It's not moving. There we go. Unfortunately, we just finished our post-test a few days ago, so I don't have data to show you our specific progress. Uh, we're in the process of scoring nearly 2,000 student responses. But, um, what I can share with you tonight is some of the information that we discovered right off the bat from that pre-test. From our general ed population, we discovered that a little more than 70% of our students had little to, little to no difficulty, um, in the literacy format that we used. Now, although 70% is quite good, we felt confident that there was plenty of room for growth, and we are anticipating seeing higher grades as we're, as we're bringing in the post-test right now. However, an area that we saw a concern right off the bat and which we need to focus our work is in the area of special education students and our E, and our English language learner students. Um, only a, a little over 20% of our students, uh, showed mastery on that pre-test. So that's certainly an area where we can continue to grow. It is our hope that this final data collection will give us even greater focus and a target to continue the staff development because we understand that staff development is, isn't something that has a beginning point and an ending point, that it is a continuous process. Hope, my hope is that this is a launching pad, um, for further professional development in other areas as well so that we're working in conjunction with our teachers, providing rich opportunities for our students where we're increasing their, their literacy capabilities. And the idea is collectively that we're working together to prepare each and every one of our students so that when they walk across our stage at graduation in the May of each year, that every student is college and career-ready.
That's great, Dawn. Would you be able to share with us the data when you finish?
Yes, I'd be one happy to. We just, we just, uh, brought it in a few days ago. And so the, um, the multiple choice, that was easy to score and we already have that. It's those, those, um, those text-based free-response questions that's taking us, and we have to use the rubric on it. But I would be happy to do that, yes.
Well, that's phenomenal what you've done with us.
Will your techniques, techniques and results be shared beyond North Forsyth? Will you be able to share them with other schools?
I would be, um, more than happy to share those with other students. Um, I know Nita Giddish that's working, uh, with our English language arts, um, here at the county office, and I'd be more than happy to share this information with her and we could take this out to, to other departments. I think, I think literacy is really the key if you wanna see significant growth in, in our students' progress.
It is.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Very impressive.
Good evening. I was hoping Dawn would leave a couple of minutes that I could use. I don't, I don't think she did.
We didn't keep up with the timer too good, if you noticed.
Okay, well, thank you again for the opportunity to share, uh, some of the highlights from my project as well. It's, it's really been a project, uh, that goes right to, to my passion, which is directly in the classroom and, and working with teachers on instruction. I'm not that far removed from the classroom and, uh, it, it still is, is very much a passion to me. And, uh, fortunately, I work for, for a gentleman, Dr. Davison, um, who has allowed me to, to take that passion and turn it into a project. Uh, for, for the last couple of years, he and I have had a lot of conversations, as our whole, our, our whole leadership team has, about how to really improve instruction. And this year, as part of our school improvement plan, he allowed me to take that piece of the school improvement plan and, and run with a lot of the ideas that, that we talked about. Um, and it, and it all starts with the premise and, and Ellen, who I meet with on and off and have so for the last three years, constantly is reminding me, and it really is the foundation for this, is that great teachers produce great results. And so the goal of everything we do in school improvement and professional learning should be aimed at trying to make teachers even better. And, and that really serves as a premise for this. Now, I'm a visual learner, and I think you have this as a handout. I'm not sure how to blow it up here, but I'll just briefly touch on this and you can look at the details later. But one of the, one of the first things that, that I had done, uh, with Dr. Davison and our group there is to try to create a visual so that when I'm meeting with teachers and we're talking about where they are in their development and where they are as classroom teachers, we'd have a visual aid to, to kinda give them an idea of where they are and where they hope to be. And kinda point out that even the rock stars among them have, have room to improve. And, uh, so this pyramid of effective instruction, uh, has, has been something that, um, that I've worked closely with the teachers, I've, that I've, uh, had the honor to supervise and it's, and it's now spread out throughout the school and we use this as a, as an administrative tool. I won't go through the details of it, other than to say, if you look at the, at the bottom quadrant, it has Lambert's Big Four as it pertains to instruction, which is, which is really the pillars of, of our school, which is building relationships that support success, clearly stating our learning goals for students, planning and implementing engaging strategies for instruction and using feedback. And, and really, this pyramid in itself is trying to articulate to teachers what our expectations are. So, you know, in a sense, modeling to them what we hope they're doing in the classroom. In brief, the difference between the three levels of this is that level one, again, those four core things, if they're going on, you're gonna have a great classroom instructor. But to get to level two, that's gonna involve you collaborating with other teachers and other members of your content team. And then certainly, our goal for all of our teachers is to be at level three or a leader in our school where they're leading initiatives like this as opposed to just participating in those. And, um, so really, the goal of this, of this project was to develop a process for, for teachers to see how they can move up, uh, up the pyramid. The first, uh, the first step that I had to do was conduct a little research, uh, among our faculty and find out where they were and their thoughts of, of how to improve. And so quite simply, the, the first question I asked them was, "Do you wanna improve?" And of course, 100% said that they did. And then when I asked them what they were doing to improve, most of the responses I got, and I threw some of them up on, on this slide, but most of them were really, really pertain to implementation of, of new standards, which is something we spend a lot of time on because we have the new Common Core. We always have new assessment, uh, systems coming out. But none of those answers really pertain to improving their, their day-to-day craft. And so I, I reposed the question to them through traditional professional learning, professional development. And the responses that you had before you there are, are age-old, but perceptions are realities. And so this is the, the reality of, of some of their concerns with what's wrong with what we do with, with traditional, uh, professional learning. You know, and through that, I guess you would say, my first aha moment was that we really needed to find, if we wanted to find truly effective professional development, we needed to focus in on three things. Finding the right people to lead it, finding the right content, and then finding time in the school day, uh, when it could be done. Because one of the things they pointed out is when you do it in the summer or you do it before the school year, bad timing when you, when you try to do it at the breaks, they're trying to get their grading done. So the reality is, we've gotta find ways of building it into the school day. And so that's, that's what we tried to do. The next step then came right out of the gate in trying to determine who would be the right people to lead, to lead other teachers in, in improvement. And if you look at the survey results, the administrators didn't fare so well in terms of our feedback. And it, and it's a little misleading, you know, the bullet point underneath there, when they see us come in the classroom, no matter how helpful we try to be, they see us as their evaluators in whether or not they're gonna get the job next year and get to come back. They, they stated very clearly that the best feedback they could get is feedback from colleagues who are in the trenches with them, who know the day-to-day struggles that they have. Um, 68% specifically indicated that it comes from people who teach the same content with them, which really gave insight for that other question about what should the content focus on? It shouldn't focus on the content that they're, that they're entrenched in every day. The next question I asked then was, was basically about how, if, if they're stating that their, their colleagues are the, are the ones that they get the best feedback from and, and they see the best out of, how often do you get in your colleague's classroom to see what they're doing and offer feedback? And you can see the results here, over, or nearly 80% of them have done little or no peer observations. Um, and, and when asked why, there's that fear in anybody that's, that's been a young teacher or, or even a veteran teacher, there's that little bit of fear of providing feedback to a colleague that they might think you're being judgmental. Or that internal fear that you're not qualified. So those became sort of the focus for the training sessions that, that we were about to go into is how do we remove that, that fear of being judgmental? But, but getting back to this, asking that question, what are they doing to improve? Well, they stated the best avenue to improve is through observations, peer feedback. And they all readily admitted that they weren't doing that. So the answer, the question is, what are you doing to get better? Unfortunately, when we're talking about the craft of teaching, the, the answer is not a lot. Or at least not that they could articulate. So that became the project. And, and the, the, the core of this really was, was developing a, a, a training session that would, that would lead them into peer observations and, and what, what we all know as peer coaching. And I wanted to speak just very briefly about peer coaching because I've been a part of it as a teacher in, in two different counties. And I think all the research is there, that clearly it is a, a great avenue to, to improve instruction. But there's been, uh, mistakes along the way that have, that have sort of wiped out the, the, the baby with the bathwater, so to speak. And so I wanted to avoid those mistakes when we went into this. The first one being, a lot of places I've been that have done this, they start out with the whole school being involved in it. I wanted to start out with smaller groups. Most of the schools that have, that have done this have gone interdepartmental right out of the gate. We, we needed to start within content teams because there's a trust level that's already there. Training, I, I've been in, had been in two, two different places where we've done this where there's been no training to go with it. And, um, the, the last one is there's been such a focus on the product that, that you kinda lose the benefit of what really in this is the process. And I'm gonna skip ahead here because she's giving me the, the hook sign over here. The training sessions themselves, and here, here's a list of things that we covered. I'll just highlight a couple. Uh, developing a, a common instructional vocabulary that matches up so that the teachers and the, and the administrators are speaking the same language for what we think is effective. Walking them through scenarios about how to conduct a, a post-observation conference in a way that's not judgmental of their peers and, and practicing that before we turn them loose. Um, and then guaranteeing them that at the end of an observation, the teacher being observed owns the data. It doesn't leave the classroom, so it's not being handed to somebody for an evaluation. The point of all of that really is trying to build trust, eliminating the time constraints, and focusing again on the process rather than the product. To clarify that, obviously, there's a product we want better teaching. But in terms of the product they had to produce, instead of reflection journals and, and written responses to questions, that becomes one more administrative thing I have to check off. We didn't wanna go into that. Uh, and it was great advice that came from Joey Allen, said just bring them in and meet with them in small groups. You have the questions ready, let them reflect in front of you. And, and I've gotta tell you, those meetings were amazing because teachers were talking about their craft, which is, in high school education, to get a teacher to talk about their craft over their content is, uh, is very exciting. The results, I'll just skip ahead to those. The results, uh, to date, and we still have a few going on, but we started out with 19 teachers and to date, they've conducted 127 peer observations and post-conferences, uh, in addition to the meetings that they, that they've had with me. Uh, that means every teacher in this program has had six peers come in and observe them and give them very specific feedback. Next slide is just, uh, so that, so that you realize it's not light and fluffy sort of conversations they're having, that the type of observation, I'll just, I'll just look at the first bullet point there. But they'll go in and record, in some instances, every question that teacher asks. And then the two teachers sit down together with a Bloom's taxonomy chart, and they'll compare the questions asked with where that is on the chart, and they can determine levels of rigor. And, and that gives them certainly a, you know, a, an aha moment themselves about how they maybe need to step up their, their questioning methods in class. The rest of the results around here, the one I'm, I'm most excited about, the world history group said that as part of their data team process next year, they wanna, they wanna add this as an element because they've, they've gained so much out of it, uh, from seeing each other in the classroom. And, uh, and several anecdotal things along those lines that have, that have really excited me as we've gone along with this. Finally, what I would say for this, and there's a lot of conclusions that I drew from this, but I think for any truly effective professional development, the, the very first one is the most important one. And it speaks right to the culture of a school and to, to the trust level that's built up between the administration and amongst teachers. And fostering that culture of trust, I think, is the key to any improvement that has to be in place before any improvement can take place. Um, and then the other thing is changing, changing people's perceptions. Teachers need to see themselves as leaders. And once they see themselves as leaders, they're gonna, they're gonna lead their, their colleagues in instruction that's going to improve across the board. Next year, we hope that this will be a part of the new teacher orientation at Lambert. It's already expanded to other content teams. We want it by the, by our third year. We're hoping this'll be all content teams. And I had some good conversations with Dr. Price, Kelly Price, about starting this across the county, starting with a very small group of advanced placement teachers and getting them in each other's classrooms. Thank you.
Mitch, that was just fabulous. In fact, I couldn't help but mirror what you're talking about, that it starts with trust. And our beliefs, it starts with trust. And the next is a highly qualified staff, which is what you're talking about here. And it goes on and on and on. It, it reflects greatly what we believe is the whole county. But, uh, you're right, you get so caught up in the, the mess that you don't go back and start with your foundation.
Absolutely.
That's great. Can't wait to see this across the county. This is good.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have our legislative update by our esteemed representative. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Dan. I can't see, I gotta put these glasses on a lot of times.
Yeah, Mike might can do the financial report.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Are we gonna have a clap for you, Dan? Okay.
I know Mike's more important, so.
And Dan, also, if you don't mind, would you kind of summarize what we, we learned at our meeting with the tax commissioner?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll talk about that.
Thanks.
Okay, we have tonight the financial report for the month ending March of 2013. We started the month with $78,497,000. Our revenue for the month was $13,597,000. Our expenses were $23,125,000, leaving us about, at the end of March, uh, $68,969,000. And this is almost $2 million less than the same time last year. So that sort of continues to be our trend this year. Our budget, uh, revenues were at 83%, almost 84%, and the expenses right at 75%. So we're right in line. Look at, uh, after Lorden taxes, we've collected 95%. And one I wanna point out is real estate transfer taxes. We haven't hit 100% the last three years in that category. So, uh, we are exceeding what we budgeted, and that's, that's a good sign showing that there's some growth going on. And hopefully, that'll be reflected- And hopefully that'll be reflected in our digest. But budget's right in line with where we need to be. Again, the list of checks for the month, we can get you anything you need on that. Schools, you can see all the schools did report this month, and the total in all the accounts is six million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Sales tax, we are up from last month, we collected two million, five hundred and sixteen thousand. That is about a six percent growth, and it's almost eleven percent better than this time last year. So the trend in sales tax over last year is what we like to see, and we'd like to see it keep growing. But so far, with SPOS four, we've collected twenty million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. And the investment, we earned thirteen hundred and thirteen dollars this month, and there's twelve million dollars in that account, and that will be used to make bond payments. And to give you a little picture, this is what it looks like, you can see that we're sort of, looks like we're going to level out about the two and a half million dollar SPOS three, they earned seven hundred and eleven dollars, and there's five point three million left. And again, that's for bond payments. This oh-seven bond, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars in interest, and there's seven million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The oh-five bond, we earned four hundred and fifty-two dollars in interest, and there's three million, four hundred and sixteen thousand left there. Our capital outlay, we have seven point two million that's not encumbered or budgeted for some other purposes. And debt service, there's currently seventeen million in the sales tax accounts and seven, almost seven point eight million in our checking account. That gives us twenty-five million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand for bond payments.
When's the next payment due, Dan?
It'll be end of June.
How's the refunding going?
We're working on it, it's just a time process. We've got everybody in place, all the attorneys, the accountants, and everybody else is lined up, you know. We're gathering information. I've already sent some to our bond attorney, and their next step is we're getting the official statement nailed down, and then we'll have the bond ratings. And I think in May, we'll come back, and y'all will have to adopt a resolution, so just moving along. So far, the market's still coming in our favor. And that's the financial report. We had a meeting that Ms. Light was talking about with tax commissioners, there was one county commissioner, city folks, the county finance people. And what it was to talk about was the tithe adblocker tax. It went into effect March first. This will take place of the birthday tax, if you bought a car March first or after, or bought one last year and choose to opt-in to this program. It was just to give them an opportunity to go over with us how the money would be dispersed. They're supposed to disperse it within thirty days of the month that it was collected. And the way it works, whatever's collected that month, the state gets fifty-seven percent of, goes down to the state. Forty-three percent is kept locally, and it's divided into thirds, in buckets. A third goes into one bucket, we get that one third. A third goes into two more buckets, each one gets a third. And it's divided up between the governmental units in the county, the city, and the county government, based on their percentage between SPOS and the other one that they have, I've forgotten the name of it. But then it's divided up that way, and they're supposed to do a comparison each month of what was collected in two thousand and twelve for the month of March versus what they got in for the month of March of two thousand and thirteen. If there is less money that was collected in thirteen, the county sends us additional money to make it hold. If it's more money, then it just comes to us and we get to keep it. At the end of the year, the state is supposed to reimburse the county for any make-hold orders that they have to send to the city or to us. So this is the first month that we should be getting the money, and we'll see how that goes.
I think that it's the long term where we'll see the difference in the money. It's not going to be upfront.
Well, this is only a comparison of adblocker to what was collected.
Right.
It's not taking into account the sales tax that we got off of sales vehicles.
All the other stuff. That's right.
So up to this point, it's been in the adblocker bucket on our monthly report?
We haven't gotten any yet, we'll get it, they said hopefully by now.
But the previous adblocker tax we used to get would have been in that bucket. So now that should stabilize in that bucket. Are we going to get a different line item for that money so we can watch it?
Yes, we will have to account for that separately. And I think this first month, they said the difference that we should get is, it was sixteen hundred dollars less than the month for two thousand and twelve. So we'll see, we'll keep you informed.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me put the glasses on. Now we have our esteemed representative, Mike Dudgeon, to give us a legislative update.
Thank you, Mike, for doing this. This is a treat.
Oh, this is a blast.
Fond memories, right?
We enjoy Buster's, but it's just a treat to have you.
Well, I actually thought I was in the legislature when I came in, I had a whole list of people ready to speak who weren't real happy with it. That's like I'm in a committee meeting all day, that's pretty much my job forty days of a year. But good to be back here, and it's, I told them when I walked up here, it's no bashing of the golden, this is a much more positive political environment, let me put it that way, and I still miss it every time I come in here. So we're going to talk about what passed and what didn't, which is what I did last time, and give a little, hopefully a little colorful stories to make it a little bit more interesting. We have one gigantic education bill, House Bill two eighty-three, which ended up having almost everything in it. I actually wrote this bill and worked with Representative Coleman and was author of the bill up until about two weeks in the session, when I was a naughty boy and could not carry any more bills because me and eighteen of my colleagues voted against the governor's and the speaker's bill, and so in politics, you know, sometimes actions have reactions, and so Chairman Coleman became the primary sponsor of this bill. But I sat right there as the wingman, and we took it all the way to the end. Two eighty-three was sort of the omnibus bill that came out of Education Finance Study Commission that Buster served on, and I was a groupie on. It basically was trying to wrap up their work, but ended up getting more than that. It repealed some silly things in the law. My favorite was that it was requiring that superintendents had to have an office in a courthouse. So we thought we got to move Buster down the road there, but it's got to be repealed along. My favorite thing, and I worked really hard on this, is, and we got the governor to fund this, is a seven million dollar technology grant program specifically to get systems who are not up to speed with internet bandwidth, to give them incentives so they will come up to speed to get to digital learning. I won't get all the details, it's very hard to figure out how to finance that because internet, you get e-rate, and you pay for it, and long story short, we came up with a good program, and Bob Swigum and the DOE guys are excited about administering that. So hopefully, we can incentivize some of the systems, not like us or Second in the Nation, to do better. So we're really excited about that. We removed No Child Left Behind from the code, I got a big kick out of that, I was a big fan of that. We did get some better charter system accountability in the code, where they're going to be required to do more reporting and to have more specific things have to be in the charter system agreement for them to get it around student achievement and things like that. That was a pretty considerable concession, and we start, I'll talk a bit more about charter systems later, it's a theme you will see coming up. Another concession we got of the charter systems folks was, they of course get essentially an average of a hundred dollars extra per child. For Fulton County, that year would have, this year would have been almost ten million dollars. The vast majority of the legislature and the governor feel that that is not the best use of money, is to give a hundred dollars extra per child for charter system. I would say Lieutenant Governor and his people have a very different opinion of that. So the negotiated compromise this year was to cap those awards at four and a half million dollars, still per year. It was thought to be a one-time grant, but if the current law would be, they would get a hundred dollars a child up to four and a half million, so Fulton would be capped. For example, when others, when another big system came on, they would be capped also.
From now on? I mean, this is from now on, they'll give?
This is new law, and the governor's going to sign this, I presume, in a couple weeks, so, yes. So, I mean, the current law said they got a hundred dollars per year forever, so now it just says a hundred dollars per year up to four and a half million per system, so it just capped. So that's the, we'll get into that in a minute. We did have some QBE changes, they were pretty small, the Education Finance Committee worked on around counselors and a little bit moving around textbook money into technology. We had some cleanup on some online learning stuff we did. And here's what happened to this bill, this is the worst example of this in my three years of legislature, it became the ultimate Christmas tree. We had very, very few education bills that actually passed, and there was like six or seven, the Senate had almost none. So everybody was piling all their stuff onto this bill, and it almost became, we had eight or ten versions. Some good things got on the bill, one was we did fix the IE squared language, which would have caused problems unnecessarily for Forsyth and Gwinnett Counties in specific, which said that if you didn't meet your goals for three consecutive years, then in the middle of your contract, you would face penalties. Doesn't make any sense, it's a five-year contract, and if it's three consecutive years, if you happen to miss your three, you're toast. As y'all know, that of course, any good deed does not do unpunished, and AJC put it on the, you know, paper and excoriated us for being evil, and, but I'm used to that, but did that with me with educate, I mean, with equalization last year, so that's just par for the course. We had an issue about Sumpfer County voting rights, we had to stick in there, we had something with Charter School and Margaret Kaiser's district around what the contiguous or school definition was, but the most, the biggest and most ornamental thing on this Christmas tree, and what kind of disturbs me a little bit, is this is what got all the press. If you read anything on that House Bill two eighty-three, the only thing they talked about was the student scholarship organization, and that Representative Earhart attached the SSO bill, the private school scholarship stuff, to two eighty-three. And there was a huge battle of this, I mean, Representative Earhart first wanted eighty million dollar cap instead of fifty, it came to sixty-five. We passed it in the House with sixty-five, and went to the Senate, they changed it to fifty-seven. It came back, Earl did not want to agree to that. We almost had a situation, this bill almost died, I mean, it was only passed at ten fifteen, and there was the most dramatic thing I've been involved with in the House of sitting at the speaker's podium with several people and trying to pull this out of the fire, and we had the governor's people in the hall, and it was total panic. We thought we were going to lose the whole Christmas tree with all the good stuff in it over that one issue. But luckily, we were able to move it through and get it done, so that was a close one. House Bill two forty-four, hearing Mitch talk, you know, showed once again that Forsyth County is already ahead of the game in many ways, and I was just talking to him about how some of the stuff he's doing for teacher evaluation is similar to what is going to be happening with House Bill two forty-four. So this is adopting the Race to the Top, Develop Teacher Evaluation System in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. For your tests, for your CRCT and your intercourse-based tests, fifty percent of the teacher evaluation is supposed to be based on student growth metrics. This came through the subcommittee that I chair, and for Brooks, the Education Support Committee, I chair for him, and we, and I grilled some of the BOE people, I'm like, all right, so what about if I got a school where already ninety-six percent of the kids are doing excellent on the CRCT? How's a student going to grow in that model? And they promised me that they're going to come up with something to account for that, and I hope they will. And one thing I have done is spent a lot of time with all the different, with Martha Whitecraft and all the different BOE stakeholders, DOE stakeholders, being the math guy that I am, looking at like the CCRPI, looking at these evaluation systems, I'm going to try to make sure that this is a good, fair math when it comes out. It has multiple classroom observations, just like what Mitch was talking about, and these be by trained evaluators. Has four rating categories instead of two, you know, before, now a teacher is satisfactory, unsatisfactory, now you have four. The teacher, this was some of the teachers groups got us to put this in there, where if you don't get a bad rating, you can, sort of like an appeal process, you can get some face-to-face remediation for that. But also, it's supposed to be used for retention promotion policies, and even talks about pay, but I don't know why it says that, because we don't have performance-based pay. It's not waivable, so on the different things you can waive, this will not be waivable. An interesting thing is, we talk about the people from Midway here today, in my committee, we had two hours of solid testimony on this, of about thirty people from all over the state, and it was uniformly positive. You had small systems, big systems, rural systems, principals, teachers, I mean, it was very, very positive. And they all said something like this, this system is not perfect, it has problems, it's going to have bumps in it, but it is so much better than what we've had before, that we're very excited about it. And it said it makes the teachers think, like Mitch is doing at Lambert, makes them think about getting better. Because right now, ninety-nine point six percent of teachers statewide get a satisfactory, only point four get unsatisfactory. So there's really no differentiation. So now the teacher's like, well, I got a, I don't remember the names, I got the next to the highest rating, what do I need to do to get the highest rating? And it is rubric-based, which we're saying how we teach our kids with the rubric and the standards-based education, so it's similar. I'm optimistic for this, but I would tell you that the legislature, and me in particular, and people like Chairman Coleman and Chairman Tippins, we're going to be watching this very carefully because we don't want this to go off the rails. But it's a great, so far, so good, we'll see how it goes. Hopefully Forsyth County can do a good job. We passed.
That was your concern?
I'm sorry, my concern is around measuring that fifty percent that's going to end up on what I would call math, you know what I'm saying? On student growth, which sounds great, and I want to measure student growth, and I want to award student growth, but the devil's in the details because you have to compare like students. Well, I added a bunch of students who were a bunch who did really bad, or have more ill or speciality kids, and then this other teacher over here, and to normalize, to sort of account for all that becomes very difficult.
It does.
It does. And I just want to make sure that we don't accidentally run over some good teachers because a formula comes up with the wrong answer.
Oh, and then you have classes that have pair of pros, and you have ones that don't. There's no equality.
That's why, you know, y'all know Martha, she's, they know this, and they're working really hard to try to make this corrective anyway. I think, again, it's going to be better than what we have, but we need to watch it, so just to make sure that it's fair. At the reform, we limited ourselves to seventy-five dollar gifts, though it's still, you could have a gift at breakfast, lunch, and dinner, as they said. It is true for all levels of government, so technically it applies to you guys, I don't know how many seventy-five dollar gifts y'all get as board members.
Yeah, the next to me, the first.
But just thought I'd say that. One nice thing it did do is we reversed the requirement that local officials have to file online with the state, and if you're going to have less than twenty-five hundred dollar contributions in a year, you can file one form and just be done with all the paperwork. You can also file the county instead of going to the state now. We said no sports tickets, that would I guess apply to you guys too, if your tickets to the Masters are off the table. No international travel gifts. And a big thing, and actually some of us younger guns sort of advocated for this, there's a week before session where there's all these fundraisers, and they're not disclosed until after the session, that's kind of bad, we close that, you have to disclose those fundraisers before the session starts. Real quickly about this because it's tangential related to schools, juvenile justice reform, a huge thing, rewrote, the code is so messed up, it's all done in the seventies, basically promoting more non-incarceration alternatives for juveniles who are not violent, more funding for community-based programs, ninety thousand dollars a year to keep a kid in juvenile incarceration, it's unbelievably expensive. And it adds what they call a children in need, if you're truant or unruly, right now the law, I guess, says either you're normal or you're delinquent or you're a felon or whatever, and this makes a better step for that, and this I think will help us serve our more difficult children. And this, this is the kind of good governance stuff that we do every once in a while that legislature can be proud of, so, every once in a while.
Dan, I want a committee, the Juvenile Justice Committee, and it's causing a little bit of panic, wouldn't you say? With all the different, Jesse's house, I mean, because some of the wording is not clear. So you have to.
Yeah, Judge, Jack and I dug into that pretty hard. I went to Wendell Willard, the author of this, and I took him, Judge Jackson's email about Jesse House, and he's told me directly, the author of the bill, that it was never intended to affect Jesse's house, he knew about Jesse's house, he wanted it to continue.
And the boys' lodge, and because it could be construed that they can't, they're not.
Yeah, that's the whole different lawyers thing, do you know what I'm saying? I will tell you that the legislative intent is not to do that, and what will happen is, if it causes any problems, if we have to do a fix, we'll do a fix. So my message to you is, is that I got the author of the bill, and Jack got the guy in the Senate, to both say legislatively that the intent is the no problem.
Good.
So, yeah. Because once I got Rusty's thing, I'm like, I got worried, do you know what I'm saying?
He was.
And when you have a hundred-page bill, you know, I don't think that, we'll have a five-page cleanup, that's just the way that place works. And like, we'll have a cleanup on adblocker thing next year, I'm sure, again, too, we had another one this year. Return to play act, the concussion thing, this was a very interesting bill to me because I had, I was all over the place. I violently opposed the bill last year because it was very prescriptive and it had lots of paperwork. In fact, last year, this bill would have required every youth sports league to get a parent to sign a form every season for every sport, and I'm like, it's a blizzard of paperwork. So we came to a little bit of a better bill on the concussion, basically says y'all are going to have to have a policy on concussions. If you have symptom of concussion, you get a force and evaluation, if it's diagnosis of concussion, it's got to come out of the game. This is basically what Georgia High School was already doing, but there was this huge push from the NFL and from the leadership that we wanted to make this into law. Y'all are going to have to give an information sheet from you guys to sports media about concussions, online training will be provided by the state. The good thing that we stuck in there, which I think was good, was give some indemnity. So if you've got a volunteer trainer at the middle school football game who goofs up[1793.71] up and does not recognize concussion or whatever, that he doesn't have to, he gets some indemnity from that unless he's a professional. If he's a doctor, then that's his job. But if he's a volunteer, then some indemnity, which I think is good. So, this is one of those things where, you know, ideally, probably, we didn't need to do this, but at least we kinda got a better package than we started with last year. Just real quickly, the HOPE grant, the Technical College Eligibility, used to be two-point-oh for many years. And when we did the change through years at HOPE, took it to three-point-oh. And it was causing some consternation with the Technical College folks. And so, we took it back to two-point-oh. As you probably well know, the Technical College system here is a great success in Georgia and there are thousands of unfulfilled jobs for people coming out of Technical College. So, we wanna encourage as many people to get in there as possible. And also, they're starting to do outcome-driven funding for the Technical College system instead of enrollment funding. Very interesting to see this trend. The Regents are looking in this too, which says, I'm not just gonna give you X dollars per kid, give you X dollars per people who get to this point in their career, and this point, and this point. And so, I haven't heard anything about that in K-12. I don't think it would work at all for K-12 with mandatory attendance and all the other things. But it's interesting to, to see that trend starting. What failed, actually, I missed a slide here. There's one big thing that failed. I meant to put a big giant crater and that was my flexibility bill.
I was gonna ask you about that.
So, we'll talk about the first, House Bill three seventeen. I had it on here. I was taking it out to go put another slide. Like I said, I was trying to find some sort of horrible bombed-out building or something like that and, and for a picture. But then I got distracted and I sent Valerie the thing. So, the flexibility bill was really interesting. It passed the House overwhelmingly. I don't think it got but a few no votes. It had very broad support. We'd gotten actually almost all the education groups, including the teacher groups and the school boards group and HERB, and everybody was on the same page and, which is unusual, especially after last year with the whole charter school kerfuffle and would've allowed.
So, you spell that?
Kerfuffle.
Yeah. That's my grandma's old word.
I like it.
Would've allowed to, you know, high-performing school districts to be waived out of all the state bureaucracy without all the hoops you have to jump through with IE squared and things like that. And it ran into the charter systems immovable object. And that's something I can describe. The Lieutenant Governor and some people in the Senate really believe the charter systems is the solution for all education flexibility, moving forward and things of that nature. So, and the fact that alternatives to charter systems exist, they're unpopular with a certain faction of people, the legislature. So, this did not even get a hearing in the Senate at all. It did die completely. So, it'd be interesting to see, because now we're sitting here with a two thousand fifteen flexibility deadline looming. Because there's blanket class-size waivers, blanket expenditure control waivers. July first, two thousand fifteen, unless legislature does something, they end. You guys on IE squared, you'd probably be okay. But some of the smaller systems, if you really let that end, I mean, that's a, that's something that's gonna be beyond our, my ability to comprehend. So, what happens next year? We'll talk about the next slide, but we'll see. But suffice it to say that the charter systems is, is really the game that's in town right now politically. And I prefer that other options were on the table, but my, don't have enough pull.
Well, what, what can we do to help, Mike? Because honestly, charter schools don't fit our system. And it wouldn't fit Gwinnett County or Cherokee County. I can't believe that Fulton went that way. Because you have constant moving targets with, with growth and you just can't do this. And to force us into a model that's not gonna be working, I just don't get it. I just don't understand why they're being so narrow-minded about it.
It's, it's just difference of opinion. In other words, the feeling of pushing more governance local and getting more parents involved and getting more grounds up instead of top-down, that is the philosophy that is being sold with the charter systems movement. And therefore, any sort of top-down-ish solution, even if it's top-down from the local board, is not looked at as favorable by these proponents as the bottoms-up. It's a philosophical and it's a political, it's a political issue and we can talk probably more about it offline. I can tell you some stuff I can't really say in front of, in front of the microphone. A couple of other things that failed were the Parent Trigger Act. Representative Lindsey, who now is running for Congress and Phil Gengry's old seat, passed the House and not passed the Senate. Freedom Week Curriculum was an interesting bill that, that ended up by Subcommittee and we went around and around about it, about basically trying to make during the Constitution Freedom Week in September to make sure that schools were teaching about the founding fathers, teaching the founding documents, things like that, which, most of which are already in the standards anyway. But that's sort of a feel-good thing and there's some evidence that we don't do as good a job, certainly as a country, that we need to do about that. That bill did not pass either. The one that I'm worried the most about, that next year, I believe, will be in giant, big neon letters, is the attack on the Common Core. There was a bill in the Senate, didn't go very far, but I'm, I'm, I would not be surprised next year during an election year to see some movement on that bill. I will, it will lose some street cred with some of my conservative friends on this because I don't have a problem with the Common Core. But there's a lot of conservative people who believe that it is federal overreach and that it is bad to adopt the national standard and that it waters down things like the traditional curriculum around founding fathers and things like that. There's a lot of misconceptions around it, a lot of fear and paranoia around it. And so, there's gonna be probably a pretty considerable attack on the Common Core. And I've talked to Dr. Evans, talked to a lot of people. The Common Core is not, you know, a magical thing that's coming in from out of the blue that's gonna save everybody. It's not perfect. But I think as good as rigorous, you know, Georgia already had eighty percent of the Common Core from when we got started. So, you're really kind of attacking eighty percent of Georgia's curriculum out of the gate. And my concern is not as much that maybe you could quibble with a few Common Core standards here and there or whatever. But my concern is the precedent of saying, of adopting what I would call the, the conspiracy or the paranoid mindset. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna get that going and get, give energy to that movement. And, and so by, by, by allowing people to glom on the Common Core and think it's some sort of really a bad thing.
Well, it feeds on the, the negative perception of public schools. It's just one more nail they wanna put in the coffin.
Yes. So, anyway, so I'll, I'll be, I'll be taking some arrows from a side of me, from my right, which I usually don't take down at the legislature, but I'll be taking some next year on that one.